Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to do the township's business. We ask that you give us wisdom. We ask for protection for Chief Murawski and all of our firefighters. We also ask for protection for Sergeant T. Lander and the sheriff's deputies as they serve our community. We pray for our sick and those in need. We pray for the citizens in Ukraine as they fight for the freedoms we have here in America. And Lord, there are many that need our prayers that have dealt with losses here. We pray that you just give them comfort. These things we pray. Amen.
Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Lynda Garrick. Absent and excuse, pleased. Ed Brinkfield. Jacob Newby. Lori Fisher.
Here.
Bennett, present. Supervisor Pearson.
Here. Okay. Any announcements?
No.
The department reports, as usual, available in my office. Petitions?
None.
None? Other business? Approval of the agenda?
Could we please add workers' comp insurance renewal with MML due to the time constraints?
So we would add that as number 10?
Correct.
Okay, I'll ask the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition as noted.
Okay. We have roll call on that, please.
Yes. Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Okay, now we'll go to the consent agenda.
Yes, before the board tonight is the April 18th, 2022 minutes. Approval of the April 2022 bills. Resolution adopting the participation in Oakland County Sheriff's Office Marine Patrol. The 22 SEMCOG dues of 1,283 from 101 to 61915. And then appointments to the Construction Board of Appeals. And they're all for two-year terms.
Okay. The board have any discussion on that?
Bruce, is it the same four guys that's on the Construction Board of Appeals that's always been there?
Yes, and by law we have to have one. We use them very, very rarely. We had to use them on the house that we had to condemn on the lake. That's really the only time we've had to use them. But we have to have one in place in case we do have something, so yes.
I'll grant the consent agenda. No one has any problems with it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll support. Karen, did you say it?
I'm Lauren Echolton.
I didn't see it. Karen.
You gotta be quick around here. Okay, so. You have support? Any other comments? No comments? We have roll call on that, please.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield.
Yes.
Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to item number two. The public hearing, resolution for special assessments districts. These are the second and final hearings. This is, we'll start out with the first one, Ballantyne Road and Court, Birch Grove Court, Road and Court. Township received special assessment role, SAD, prepared for the purpose of defraying the maintenance costs for grading, repair, snow removal, cleanup chloride and salt. The township received petitions signed by more than 50% of the record owners based on the tax rules of Oakland County, constituting more than 50% of the total road frontage of the proposed SAD requesting the amount of $400 per parcel for each of the next five years to cover maintenance or improvements and a 5% collection fee for the township. Proper notice of the hearing was published in the Oxford Leader on May 4th and May 11th, 2022, and mailed by first-class mail to each of the property owners. The petition of for Ballantyne Road, Ballantyne Court, Birch Grove Road, Birch Grove Court, SAD, was properly signed by the record owners of 20 parcels with 19 out of 30 signatures based on the tax rules over 63%. At this particular time, I will open up the public hearing and we'll call that at 6:04. And if anybody would like to speak, I'll say it twice. If anybody would like to speak on that, those SADs, please come forward. This is where we listen. And I'll ask one more time, please come forward. Not hearing anybody, I will close the meeting. We'll call it at 6:05. Any questions from the board on this?
No, I'd like to move the second resolution for private roads special assessment district for Ballantyne Road, Ballantyne Court, Birch Grove Road and Birch Grove Court.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, go to roll call, please.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. We'll move on to second, R B. Lena Hill and Burns Hill. The township receives request for an SAD prepared for the purpose of defraying maintenance costs of the private road known as Lena Hill and Burns Hill for grading, repair, snow removal, cleanup, chloride and salt. The township board received petitions signed by more than 50% of the record owners based on the tax rules of Oakland County, constituting more than 50% of the total frontage of the proposed SAD requesting the amount of $280 per parcel for each of the next five years to cover expense or improvements and 5% collection fee for the township. Proper notice of the hearing was published in the Oxford Leader on May 4th, 2022, and May 11th, 2022, and mailed by first-class mail to each property owner within the proposed SAD. The petitions for Lena Hill and Burns Hill SAD were properly signed by the record owners of 15 parcels with 17 out of 22 signatures based on the tax rules over 77%. I'll open up the public hearing and we'll call it 6:06. And once again, if anybody has anything to say about the SADs on Lena Hill, Burns Hill SAD, please come forward. I'll ask one more time for the public hearing on the special assessment district for Lena Hill and Burns Hill. Not seeing anyone come forward. I'll close the meeting at 6:07. Any discussion by the board?
Not discussion, but I did receive for the record a note from Mark Smith from Lena Hill Drive. I am in favor and support of the renewal creation of this SAD. Thank you. Signed, Mark Smith. Thank you.
Okay. Then a motion would be in order if there's no discussion.
I'll make that motion. I was waiting on Pauline to make it, but she was busy right now. I'll make the motion for the special, private roads special assessment district for Pine Crest, Pine Cone.
Uh, Lena Hill and Burns Hill.
For Lena Hill and Burns Hill.
I'll support moving that resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussions? Can we have roll call on that, please?
Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and that passes. Okay, we'll go on to the last one, which is Pine Crest, Pine Cone, Pine Bluff and MAC. The township received a special assessment role, SAD, prepared for the purpose of defraying maintenance costs of the private known as Pine Crest, Pine Cone Court, Pine Bluff Court and MAC for road improvements. And the petition signed by more than 50% of the record owners based on the tax rule of Oakland County, constituting more than 50% of the total frontage of the proposed SAD requesting the amount of $600 per parcel for each of the next five years except for parcel 0523451015 to be assessed at 227 to cover maintenance or improvements and a 5% collection fee for the township. Proper notice of the hearing has been published in the Oxford Leader on May 4th and May 11th, 2022, and mailed by first-class mail to each property owner within the proposed SAD. The petitions for Pine Crest, Pine Cone Court, Pine Bluff Court and MAC SAD was properly signed by the record owners of 16 parcels with 14 out of 23 signatures based on the tax rules of over 61%. And once again, I'll open up the hearing. We'll call this one at 6:09. If anybody would like to speak on any of those SADs, please come forward. I'll ask one more time, if anybody would like to speak on those SADs, please come forward. Not hearing any, I'd like to close the meeting at 6:10. Any discussion by the board?
I'll move the resolution establishing a private roads special assessment district for Pine Crest, Pine Cone Court, Pine Bluff Court and MAC. I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, but please have roll call on that one, please.
Yes, Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. And that passes. Okay, we'll go on to item number three. Expand, extend the planner, Rand Bowman's agreement through June 30th, 2023. I think we all know, Mr. Bowman has done a terrific job for us over the years. This is only a one-year extension. I know that, I think he's planning on retiring someday, and so he's only guaranteeing us one more year, but he's such a great planner that we certainly don't want to use him, lose him. And if we can get him for another year, that's terrific. So, does anybody have any discussions?
I'd like to make a comment in the motion. I've known Rand since he joined us. I was part of the planning commission when he joined us. He's been a great planner since, since we hired him. Very knowledgeable, and I'd like to make a motion that we extend his contract for one more year.
I'll support, and I echo what you said about Rand. He done, he has done a wonderful thing for the township.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the board? Not hearing any, can we have roll call, please?
Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and that passes. Go on to item number four, RFP, results for Lakeville Cemetery Colimbarium site work. I'm gonna leave a lot of this up to Pauline, because she's handling most of the cemetery stuff, but. Which one do you need? Oh, you need some of my paperwork.
I know, I bet you very well.
Okay. So anyways, I'll let you just go ahead with this, you know, this is on the RFPs for the.
Okay, so I sent the board out something today, just to kind of summarize where we were. The engineer, everyone received his rendition of the RFP that we received. I went ahead and broke it down a little bit more. In talking to Sunset, they really and truly pushed that we should not have any trees planted by the colimbariums, because they want the space so that the, there's wind going through, there's sunshine coming in, and Bruce had another idea on that one as well. So if we remove the trees, which is addenda number two, it brings down the RFP price to, for Rewald, $200, $20826, and for the other company, Allen Group, $247, and then $53. Addenda number one are the planners, and this was something that the board, if my memory serves me right, we really liked the look of it, but we kind of wanted to see what the price was gonna come back at before we actually said yes or no to. So I broke that out as well. So if we remove the planters from this, Rewald's bid goes down to $194,174. If we also remove the same from the Allen Group, their bid goes down to $231,333. So there is a difference between the two of $37,159. So in going through this and in going through what our engineers came up with, I think the only discussion point left is, do we want the planters in front of the colimbariums? And after we have that discussion, then we, we would know what way to move. I personally think it looks nice to have the planners, but I've also had the experience of going to other cemeteries and looking at some of the colimbariums. And the one that we really drew a lot of information from was at Independence Oaks. They have nothing. They just have the benches sitting there. And it really reminds me of going to Washington DC and seeing the wall. So it was very peaceful, very calm without the planters. So it's really more of a personal, whether we would like to see the planters there or, or not, because it's gonna look good either way. Karen, what do you think?
I mean, there's upkeep with the planters.
Yep.
We didn't have, I mean, I know we talked briefly about what we put in those, but.
Watering, we probably could take care of between the sexton and then the cemetery auxiliary, which some of them are here right now. I'm sure that we would all take turns taking care of that. But yeah, there would be upkeep, and it would be more of a less of a yearly type upkeep as well.
There was questions about the coloring of the brick, not me asking the color of the pavement. I mean, I think, from what I remember.
We narrowed down the colors, so the colors are narrowed down, but yeah, it's gonna be similar to the diagram that they proposed if we went with them, but it is a different color. It's a different color than the colimbarium. It's a different color than the actual brick. It's a lighter tan color. Like with a little red, so.
You could also put something that's movable later in the day, I guess if you get, if you found it empty, right? I mean, we do that at home. You put stuff on your deck and.
Change it.
So, I mean, those were bigger, obviously, the planters, but. I'm a little.
Jacob.
I really wanted to choose coloring or.
We're not.
I'm okay without the, I'm actually okay without the planters. I think it looks fine without them, but. I'm not an interior designer. I think we could do without them, though.
Going down the line.
I'm comfortable without the planters. I think sometimes with that stuff, you're just, you know, in the, in the future, there might not be people to take care of them, and it looks worse to have ill-cup planters than no planters.
To be honest with you, I, my brother is buried up at the National Cemetery, and I don't see any of those planters there or anything like that. It's kind of a thing where you go there and you're there for a different purpose and, and. So I'm fine without them, you know, I don't see them when I go up there. So I, now that you mention it, I don't see any of them up there.
I'm okay without them.
I am too, and I like how the engineer thought of everything so that when, if we decided to go without the trees and the planters, then the, this would just be extended to take its place, so that walkway would just be extended. So I thought that was really cool, that he thought of every detail on this RFP. So I think that, that was only the discussion point that we have.
And then what we're looking for, what is a motion to award the RFP to?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we award the RFP to Rewald. Eliminating the trees and the planters. Do you need a total price?
Um, you could stick that in if you want. It's $194.
I'm trying to figure out which one it is.
$194, so.
$194, $174.
Okay, we're looking for a second.
Sorry, I'm looking at that.
I'll second.
And we have a second.
A matter of ones were in here, and I saw where the reductions were. Were those prices in here, Pauline?
Um, what I did is, and I sent it to you by email today, is I took what our engineers did. So they said that if we removed the trees and the planters from Rewald, those were the prices. So I took those prices and took it from their total cost of 201, so it comes down to $194,174.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call then.
Karen Guybel.
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Okay, that passes. We're on to item number five. Has to do with the colimbariums again, but this is, I believe, for the service of the engraving. I think what we'd like to do is waive the purchasing orders as a professional service and authorize the RFP for engraving at the colimbarium. We'll need to contract with the company and engrave the niches. And we'll solicit from nearby firms what's being proposed as a firm for up to five years, and we need to discuss the font size, okay, based on picture. Determine if we will allow an emblem, allow for veterans to have emblems for their branch of service. Once again, this is Pauline with pictures.
So everybody should have received this. This is taken from Independence Township. And basically, each person that's inside of the niche, you can have up to two, two, would have four lines. I did call up a couple people just to get a rough idea of, let's say, why August is abbreviated. And they said it's basically for centering purposes. September, as you see in that picture, is also abbreviated. I just thought it would be nice to have it full. But they said it is for centering purposes. So this is very simple. Like I said, theirs looks very, very nice. And then I've also talked to another company where they said they actually allow people to put in, and I don't have pictures of this, let's say down at the bottom, they would put in a little emblem. So I guess what we need to know before we ask these people for an estimate, do we like the clean look? Or do we want to give residents an option to put an emblem? They also suggest that if we do go down that road, that we need to decide what maybe four emblems we would have, so that it's not total mismatch, so that it would just be, okay, you can pick up, pick one of these from these four choices. Or keep it simple with this. The only thing that I think that we should allow is that veterans right now, they have a veteran marker for those that are in, in the graves. There is no way to have a veterans' marker here. So I do think that we should actually allow the veterans to have an emblem of, for their branch of service on this. And that would be the only emblems that I think we should really say, yes, we're going to allow that. If we want to go above and beyond, that's up to our discussion right now.
Well, I'll start out, and I, I kind of like just the clean look of it. I'm afraid if we allow too many emblems, people are gonna come up with all kinds of emblems, but I do like the branch of service. I think that we should be able to accommodate. I'm just, I don't think that, that we should start going down how many emblems. There may be 20 emblems people want, and I think that just the clean look and then acknowledging a veteran is appropriate, but does anybody else have any comments?
Well, Bruce, you forget about my motorcycle club, haven't you?
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of.
It's kind of nice to have, you know?
I don't know how you narrow it down to four, like a, you know, heart, star, I don't know.
No, they were saying a cross, and then they would say a crucifix, and then you would have, you could have a flag and.
You'd have a star David, then you have.
Like a rose or some type of a flower would probably be the most prominent ones. But they did suggest you have to keep it to something that the township approves. It can't just be.
It's motorcycle group.
Yeah.
I do like the idea of the cross.
Yeah, but then, then you have to, then you're gonna have a half moon and a star David and.
Yeah, but are we gonna have a resolution saying what can be put in there? Or how do you quantify what we allow?
If we decide that we actually want to go forward and see some emblems in the RFP, I would like for us to narrow it down, what four we would want. Then it's gonna be up for them to show us the pictures of what their emblems are gonna be, because each company is probably gonna be a little bit different, and then we would pick. But I think at this stage, we need to know, do we want emblems? And if so, what are the four that we would have? And then I'm thinking that if we're gonna go down that road, they should all be in a certain corner so that they're all uniform, and then, of course, the veterans' emblem would be on the opposite side. But yeah, that's, that's the discussion point. And in case anybody's curious about how this works and how the RFP is written. So our company is gonna give us a few extra of these stones. So then whatever company we pick, we'll have a case, and we have them, those two stones, let's say, at that company. And then I would call them with the, for lack of words, order. And then they would engrave it. They would come out to the cemetery. The sexton would be there with them. They would then exchange it. They would put this one that's engraved on and then take the one that's existing off and bring that back to their office, so that they would always have two at their office for a rotation. So that's how the RFP is written, to do that rotation. Hopefully, we can find somebody that will do that. Everybody's short staffed, so I don't know. They might end up saying, no, you're gonna have to come pick it up. But that's the way that we're gonna go, to see if they will process in that fashion.
I need to get my head screwed on right here. They're only allowing four? Okay.
That was a suggestion from the Sunset to allow like four.
Christian, the cross.
The cross is Christian, the crucifix is Catholic, and then they said a rose or some sort of a flower, and then a flag.
Okay, I like the idea, but I see problems, big-time problems. Even though I would like to have it, I want the cross on, on there. However, I don't want Addison Township to get in a lawsuit if somebody comes up with a symbol that is not on the approved list.
Well, that's another idea.
And that's a problem in that I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.
That's a good point.
Go ahead.
I agree with you. I like the cleaner look, but allowing something for the veterans. I'd prefer to see it a little more uniform.
Normally, I'd love the cross and everything like that, and, but there's, there's a lot of religion, so I realize that could be an issue. So I, I think, make sure you include Space Force, though, in the service, right? Apparently, that's the thing now.
Say it again?
Well, the Space Force is a new department, right?
Oh, for the military, yes.
There's so many. You've got the Coast Guard.
How many?
You've got the Navy, you've got the Army, and then you've got the Navy again. You've got the Air Force, and then you've got the Navy again. I, I want to make sure the Navy has enough.
Can I ask you something?
No.
Yes.
What?
So, since you were in the service, we're gonna do an emblem for the service that they were in. Would it go on the right side, meaning here, or the left side? Is there appropriate place for that?
Now, I've got a question for, on your sample, you're showing two different people.
Well, yeah, it's gonna go.
Jennifer and John.
It will be next to their name, so it'll either be here, or here, or here, so.
Just trying to think, where would it go? You know what?
As the company?
The people that do that, ask the company.
Okay.
But is there a way we can make it that if there is a, I mean, this is their grave. If somebody asked that we put a, their belief symbol, that, we couldn't approve it if it's not a, I don't know, I, I don't, I feel like I'm turning my back on God. I mean, this is, I'm, I don't want to say not to put. I don't want to say not to put a cross on there, though. This is this is a very important thing for a lot of people.
Can we see what some of the samples are, or do we need to vote tonight on the engraving, or before we vote that?
I think we should give them some ideas of what pictures we might want to see, otherwise, I mean, they're not going to come and bring their book, so that's why I encourage, if we're gonna go with emblems, to give them some ideas of what we might want.
Could they tell us, like, what their tack, tenor that they use? I mean, I could imagine there's a lot of things.
Probably, they've done this many times.
Um, and I did talk to, Sunset is the one that told me about the emblems, and I did talk to one person who dies monuments, and it was their, I said, give me four, and those were his four top ones.
Okay, that you asked for four. What if you're gonna ask for six?
Don't know.
We're not putting all six on there. I mean, it's just like, ask them, what did they suggest? How many would they allow that we should allow?
Well, they're gonna say it's up to us, because we're we're the we're the ones asking for it, so you want up to six?
You can't put a number of four. You can't do that. You can't just say, I want only four.
Do you want a hundred? I mean, how many are we going to pick from, is I guess where I'm going?
I would just suggest, if you go through the cemetery now, you'll see every kind of emblem. You'll see somebody with a guitar on there. You'll see somebody, you know, riding a horse on there. You'll see somebody with an animal on there. I mean, how are you gonna stop that? Where are you gonna, where are you gonna put it? You know, I mean, if you say four, how are you going to?
Well, I'm thinking we're getting off on a tangent here. I'm I'm leaning toward the the spiritual side, the the Christian side, whether it's Catholic or Muslim or Jewish or right off the bat, there's four. There's gotta be others, and if the minute we say we're not gonna allow you to put it, but we will allow a Catholic to put it, then Bruce, you'll be getting a call from.
Well, that's where I just said, I would keep it clean.
Well, I'm talking about Christian, and you're talking about guitars and animals. I agree with that totally.
Well, I I I'm just saying that there, how many religions, I I mean.
If you're gonna allow a cross, you have to allow.
That's what I'm saying. If you allow a cross, you're gonna have to allow.
You'd have to allow for all of them.
And I feel like if I say I don't want a cross on it, lightning's gonna hit me before I get home, because God's gonna be very upset with me.
You you're allowed to put whatever you want in the niche, put a cross in the niche.
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure I had my head screwed on right. So you can put a cross in the niche.
Yeah, it's your ashes, yep.
Or whatever.
So my hearing, and we all have to decide this, we want to ask how many religious emblems are available?
Yeah, I mean, they might come in and say there's, I mean, I don't know, maybe there's a limited amount, and we could just offer those. I I never see, I mean, I wouldn't mind if unless you all oppose and get some suggestions on just the religious, spiritual symbols, not the animals and guitars.
Religious emblems only.
And then I'm gonna ask them for, let's say, not that we're going to say that this is only gonna be five, but maybe five samples so that we can see what they look like.
Yeah, that, I mean, that would be nice.
But then it would have to be open to all all religions, like Ed's saying, which is a good point. You'd have to have all religions.
Get in trouble. Now, as far as the military.
So we can do the size, size.
If I remember right, on my jacket, it's got the Navy, the Navy seal and my name right after that. It doesn't matter, but if you.
So it's first, so it would be down here.
Like if it was John B. Pyle, I would say right there by the John.
Well, look at Jennifer. There's not room to go right there, so it's gonna have to either go on the right side or the left side.
I would suggest that there's protocol for that, and what you have to do is contact the VFW.
There you go.
And get the protocol, because I think there's a proper way of doing it.
So I'm gonna change the RFP to to change up to religious emblems and then just ask how many different, how many different ones are there, and then for them with their RFP to give us five samples.
Yeah.
Yeah, really great.
And the Motorcycle Group would not qualify as a religious emblem.
Would it?
I don't know.
We're gonna have to define that in the resolution if we go down that road.
They'll have it.
This, was that concurrent from everybody, or just one?
Well, so far, somebody's gonna make a motion, number one, that we want to do the five.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I see what you're doing. I'll support whatever he's motioning.
Yeah, five military.
To get the spiritual type emblems and to give us five samples.
We got the Air Force, Navy, Army, Marines, Space Force.
Could we also have a motion that allows me to go out and get solicit?
Well, first of all, let's, what, you want to waive the purchasing order? Number one, so we need rule call on that, okay?
We waive the purchase requirement.
Okay, what about that?
We had a motion on the floor, I'm sorry.
Did we have, which one did we have?
We had a motion on the floor to, and this one's for consensus, for to go out for religious emblems and five samples with the.
Okay, let's have rule call on that first, then.
Karen said five.
It was, it was five, but Newby over there reminds us, we got a Space Force, you got the Army.
Oh, no, no, that has nothing to do with military. Military is automatic.
This is for religious emblems.
Oh.
The fact is just to see the samples, five different samples of what any five might look like.
The military stand on their own. They get whatever the military insignia is. Okay, this is now for the
Oh, really?
For the religious uh.
Can we change it to just one? That's the cross and everything else doesn't matter.
It's impossible.
We can't do that.
No, okay.
So, okay, so.
We haven't had a second.
Consensus, please, rule call, please.
We haven't had a second on my motion, have we?
I second that.
Oh, did you?
Yep.
To waive the purchase.
Thank you.
No, no, we're not.
We're getting there, we're getting there. Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Karen Geivel.
Yes, if you know what the motion is.
Yes, Lori Fisher.
No.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, okay. Okay, now, the second part of it, you need a motion to approve agreement, authorize it.
Waive the purchasing ordinance.
You, oh, now we're doing the purchasing, oh, we need to waive the purchasing ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll support.
And we have support on that. Any discussion on waiving the purchasing ordinance because it's a professional service? Okay, rule call on that one, please.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Karen Geivel.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, okay. Now, we need a motion to approve the uh RFP agreement and authorize a clerk to solicit the RFP with the local monument companies and bring back to the board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
So that, to approve the RFP agreement with the amendments, correct?
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? I'm hearing any. Can we have a rule call on that, please?
Karen Geivel.
Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Ed Brightfield.
Said yes.
Okay.
Oh.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, okay. Item number six, budget amendment to the ARPA funds. I think we just need to uh put some money on the revenue side, if I'm right. Budget amendment, um, last month with, uh, month, we allocated ARPA funds. Uh, we're ready to create the department as well as a budget amendment. Um, first of all, a motion to establish the account numbers and amend the budget one oh one zero 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 five two eight zero 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 increased by three hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-six and nineteen cents. And the new revenue budget total of six hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-six and nineteen cents. Is that correct?
Yes, and then we're going to continue with the amendments, though, one oh one.
Well, the one oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero, community development, three ninety-nine seven twenty-six and nineteen cents. One oh one two seven eight nine three four zero zero two, repair maintenance at two hundred and fifty thousand. Total budget amendment for expenditures of six hundred and forty-nine seven hundred and twenty-six and nineteen cents. So I need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Rule call, please.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Karen Geivel.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and that passes. Now, we'll move on to item number seven, is approval and authorize the library agreement from one oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero. Uh, the agreement before addresses the use of the ARPA funds um with another entity, which is a library, and the um entity is to use uh the funds by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and submit accounting of the funds to the treasurer. Uh, by approving the agreement, it also allows the clerk to process accordingly for payment. Does anybody have any questions on that? So we just want to make sure.
I have no questions, but I'll go ahead and um make a motion to approve and authorize the library agreement, and the funds will come out of one oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero.
Just for the record, that was one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Karen Geivel.
Yes.
Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, that one passes. Now, we'll move on to number eight. Approve and authorize the Palayan Trail um agreement for one oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero. This is the same process, only it's a Palayan Trail. Anybody have any questions on that?
It's another good use of the funds. I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the PATMC agreement from one oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero.
Support.
And we have support. Just for the record, that is thirty thousand dollars. Okay, any other discussion? Rule call on that one, please.
Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Karen Geivel.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and that passes. Now, we'll move on to uh review and approve the estimates for the parking lot resurfacing from one oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero. Um, you can see that we have several um quotes for doing the parking lot. The only thing I would tell you is that I spoke with the fire chief, and he says that in front, just that little narrow strip in front of the fire station, he says, does not need to be done. That one was done earlier when they did the cement. So, that being said, uh, two of these bids, um, had that little bit, but it's a small minute part. The one from um KMI, um, it does not have that little spot in there, but they are forty-seven thousand five hundred. Uh, with Birmingham Seal Coat with that little thing, they are sixty-three thousand two hundred and twelve. And then Allied, um, and they included that little strip. Like I said, that little strip is is um very minute, and they are at sixty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. I will say, I went out with all of them and walked the area, and all of them have the same material. And they have the same um um rock layer. We're gonna expand the seniors' parking over here. Um, the whole side now is gonna be parking on the other side and this side now, because we now realize we need more parking for the seniors to get into the building. But the, and that um is forty-seven thousand five hundred was the lowest bid, and I walked it with, um, the owner of that is Cliff Cameron, and I walked it with him, and I walked it with all of the other ones also. So it's this pleasure of the um of the board, however, that, because I I know Lori said that she wanted to use some of the money for the repaving. Now, that is to mill it, to take up, you know, grind it down, mill it, fix the really bad spots, and excavate across by the uh by the gazebo and put an all-new rock under there and then asphalt that over there, and that includes restriping of everything. So it's, anybody have any questions I'd like to ask?
Well, we put in fifty thousand from the ARPA funds, are up to fifty thousand for resurfacing of the parking lot. So based on that, we have one bid that is under the fifty thousand that we actually allocated. So unless there's questions.
I just went over at King and my Road Maintenance. I was just looking them up, but I.
They're up on.
Do you know anything about their company, like, have they been around a long time?
Yeah, they're up in North Branch, and they have, uh, these, this is the same company that they develop where they put the infrared on the bad spots of parking lots, and then they they melt the asphalt down, and then they put in new stuff, and then they seal it around, and they fix potholes. They did a demonstration for all of the township supervisors here a few years ago, and actually came out and fixed potholes in um in parking lots and everything. Um, yeah, they they've been around for a long time, and it's a local owner. He lives up on McHale. And um all of them are are good contractors. I I don't have a problem with either one of them. I've, I know of some bad contractors, and they and they didn't bid, but most people, to be honest with you, are booked. Uh, I'll tell you right now that um Allied says they will be, they couldn't couldn't possibly get to us until the fall. The other two, though, said that they could get to us.
Hey, Bruce?
Yes.
The uh KMI did meet the pricing, what we're looking for. If if you're comfortable with KMI, I would like to go ahead and make the motion to allow KMI to do the uh asphalt. It's a cost of forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
May I add, um, or can you consider a friendly amendment, contingent upon receipt of a W nine, insurance as required by legal and legal review of the agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have support. Any other comments? Okay, so we have rule call, please.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Karen Geivel. Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and that passes.
You forgot to add what it called.
Oh, I need to, oh, no, I did state that, didn't I? I said one oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero.
It wasn't in the motion, but okay, it was in the, it was on the agenda. I'll carry that down.
One oh one two seven eight 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 four zero zero zero.
I'll put it in parentheses.
Okay, now, this is the added one, workers' comp renewal. This is very simple, I believe. Most of our workers' comp are with the fire department. A- as you notice, um, uh, last year, um, our workers' comp was seventeen thousand, and it looks to me like we got it down to fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-three uh this time. So it's actually going down. I don't know why that is, unless it's because of people being out for COVID or whatever. We didn't have as many people out or whatever. I don't know. But actually, um, I'm just happy the workers' comp went down.
Bruce, maybe we should make that motion to accept that invoice right now before they find the mistake. So I'll make that motion to accept the workers' comp fund for a cost of fourteen thousand three fifty-three.
Okay.
I'll support.
And we have support.
Account number to pull it from.
You can just say general fund, fire and park accordingly?
Some general fund, fire and park accordingly.
Yeah, they'll give us that breakdown.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? We have a rule call on that, please.
Karen Geivel.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Ed Brightfield.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, okay, now, this is where we have fun, public forum. Anybody in the public would like to speak? Yes?
I have a question. I live on Ray Road, and we had, you know, extensive issues with the gypsy bonds. And I know we took our own initiative in order to spray. Do you have any idea when that's supposed to happen?
The last, I just heard today that they are waiting, you know, with bated breath to see when these little things hatch, okay? And that's the time they have to spray, so they said it's from. And that's the time they have to spray, so they said it's from, from right now until the end of the month. And they have to check the weather, the wind, the hatching, and it all has to be done perfectly. So, they just put the notices out to all the Sheriff's Department, police stations, and everything, that there'll be low-flying airplanes within the next probably ten days, somewhere in there.
So, they'll be done with airplanes this time?
Yes.
I remember in the early nineties, Oakland County had a lot of problems with it, and on Drainer Road, he actually hosted the helicopters that were spraying, and the tanks and stuff, um, right around fourteen hundred Drainer Road.
Yeah.
So, they're doing low-flying.
They're gonna do it with low-flying air, airplanes, and, um, and so that's all we know as of right now. They're waiting, and when the experts say it's the moment, and the, the stars all align and everything, and, you know, then, you know.
Well, hopefully, we'll get, you know, weeks of rain in that, in that prime time.
Yeah, no, they'll. They'll monitor the, they'll make sure that it's done at the right time, you know? That's, that's why we have, uh, Michigan State University handing, handling, uh, handling when it's time to do it. So, they're the experts.
'Cause I was trying to look and try and find information, I'm just gonna go.
It just came up today. I just got it. Matter of fact, it was just before five o'clock, they put out the statement. You'll see them now. It went to all the dispatchers and the police stations, everybody, so.
So, you say people will be notified with a flyer?
Well, they'll just be, they're just notified, all the, uh, the governmental agencies, and the, the police, and fire, and everybody are, have been notified, so don't report that there's a low-flying airplane that's crashing, or whatever. We know what it is. It's a sprayer, okay?
So, the residents won't know that it's gonna be activated in the next two to three weeks?
Not till you hear that airplane probably buzzing your house, probably, so, okay.
I mean, it was.
Yeah.
Have you ever seen any devastation that bad, is what it was along Ray Road?
Yes, um, go over there by Bar Road, uh, by Drainer, and Indian Lake there, and it devastated the Oxford side and us, too.
Yeah, I mean, it was, um, and plus, the consequences of, I happened to get the caterpillar rash. It was horrific. And, um, so, just even the health consequences people can get from something like that, if we can deter that in any way.
Well, we're hoping, and we're hoping, it's, you know, it goes in, in, um, in every five to seven years or something, and we're hoping this is the end of it. They think it is, but we'll see. Okay, anybody else in public forum?
Thank you.
Anything from the Romeo schools? Nothing that you'd like to add about anything you learned tonight?
Yeah, did you learn anything tonight? Oh, me?
No, her daughter is behind us.
She's gonna write a glowing report for the township board.
Okay, very good, then. Okay, if you need us to sign a note or anything, so you get extra credit, okay, let us know, okay?
She's embarrassing.
Okay, anybody else in public forum? Okay, and we'll go on to Addison Township Board reports. Anything, Ed? Anything?
We had a ZBA meeting last night, or, I mean, Thursday. Uh, there is a request for a special septic system going on the island. It has been, uh, reviewed carefully by the ZBA, and it's coming back next month for decision.
Okeydoke.
Uh, we had our NOHAS collection event, uh, a few weeks ago now, and, um, it was a successful one. And we have another one on June fourth at Oxford Middle School, so hopefully, it's gonna be less turnout than, like, uh, 'cause Oxford's always packed, and it's usually an hour wait, but this time, hopefully, it's a lot quicker, so.
And if you would please get with me, I have a lot of stuff that, um, needs to go, okay?
All right.
So, um, bring a trailer.
Oxford, Addison Youth Assistance, had their, um, youth recognition night last Friday. Um, really good turnout, was it with a food truck, and it was great to see the kids happy and excited about receiving their awards.
I just have one thing, finally, on the, um, Oxford Area Cable Commission, um, they, they're talking about maybe changing the bylaws. If that happens, then each township has to approve those, so they would be coming to a, but it's just a discussion right now, so.
Very good. SISMA, anything on SISMA?
No, pretty quiet.
Okeydoke, then we're done with that. Legal Communications, Legal Report, we don't have any?
Yeah.
Supervisor Report. Okay, the only thing I've got to say is, the Road Commission. Ivan, we do have a new, uh, foreman now. His name is, uh, Jason Haffendorfer, and, um, I think he's gonna work out very well. He's, uh, he answers my, uh, calls when I call him, which is, um, elated, okay? So, I know his phone works, and, um, they will be chlorating this week and grading this week in Addison Township. And, um, I was at Oakats, and everybody's in the same boat in the whole county. All the roads just were disaster this year. It wasn't just Addison Township, and, um, they're trying. And I know they get a little short with us on the phones, but they are trying. So, I'm giving this, uh, new foreman the benefit of the doubt, and I think he's gonna work out well. I had a long meeting with him, and he, I think he's really gonna try. Saturday and Sunday, our Christmas in Action group, which is a Christian, uh, group that helps all the seniors. Uh, I think this is like our twenty-eighth or thirtieth house now. We just did one on Ray Road for, um, uh, one of our seniors, who is a widow, and, um, uh, the insurance company, uh, needed, uh, many things done at the house. Otherwise, they wouldn't have insurance. We got them all done. It took a little longer than what we thought, and Sunday night, we've probably, we wrapped up after working all day and night, and I just wanna thank Christmas in Action for taking care of all of the bills, and all the people in town that donated food and pizza and donuts, especially the donuts. But, um, I wanna thank all of them for, uh, helping, and, um, I have a whole hoist, host of people that helped, and, uh, I, uh, will put that on the Facebook for the township. I, uh, had a little picture on there of all the things that we were doing, so. But, other than that, um, and we did lose a nice, a, a very nice man, a resident of Addison Township, Harold Klein, passed away a couple of days ago, and I have known him for a long time. He used to be, uh, one of the police officers that worked in Leonard, also in Oxford, and also, he was on the mounted division of the sheriff's office, so Harold and I had a lot in common, and, um, I'd be really missed. But anyways, other than that, I don't think I have anything else, and, um, ready for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have support, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Next meeting, it'll be June twentieth, six o'clock. Thank you for attending.